Review the consent agenda, the copy of the agenda is enclosed with the minutes, the financial statement, bills and personnel. Is anything to add?
The only change I had was the late change on the agenda. We moved the beverage bid to next month. Had some late negotiating action on that, so we'll just wait till December on that one.
And you might notice on your hard copy that that is off of the agenda there.
You have both hard and digital copies tonight. Something for everyone.
Yep. So I would then take a motion to accept the consent agenda presented with the one change. Motion is made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Just a couple of items before we get into the administrative reports. Again, I just always want to remind you that your C-SI goals are in front of you. School improvement goals, those are the things that we want to keep our conversations to. You have evaluations in your school inbox. That's an evaluation, your board self-evaluation and your superintendent evaluation. That'll be done next month, so the board president will direct you on that. The CTE weight training facility open house will be Tuesday, December 12th, 5 to 7. Welcome to swing by that open house. We're going to have both of those facilities open to the public during that time. We may have some snacks and some music playing. We'll try to make it very festive, but that'll be a great opportunity for the community to come in and look at those buildings and all the work that's been done for our students. So again, that's Tuesday, December 12th. And then just as kind of a looking forward in the future a little bit, the Will Springs Middle School turns 100 in 2024. So starting probably, we haven't totally decided whether it's going to be a spring or a fall celebration. Probably a fall celebration in 2024. You'll be seeing a lot of happy birthday, happy 100 birthday to the middle school coming up here very soon. So that's kind of a fun fact for you before we get started.
No smiles, no comments. I don't know, just thought I wasn't there in the first place.
About being bothered.
Alright. Well, I forget how we started last time around. Anybody want to volunteer to go first?
I'd like to go last.
Alright, so Chris?
You may go.
We're ahead.
We're still getting up, right? Set the bar high. Alright, good evening. If you notice, our attendance, or enrollment rather, has been pretty steady, which is kind of surprising because it seems like we have new students enrolling often, which is, this is a good thing. But a few dropped though apparently. But I'm going to start with celebrations in the elementary. We always have some good things going on. Just today, we recognized our former special ed teachers. Brett Kaufman, she received the, oh gosh, I'm drawing a blank. McDonald's Teacher of the Year Award, something very similar to that, which included a thousand dollar gift card, which is a really big deal. She received it out of over 1,700 recipients. It was, she was nominated by a former colleague, which is a really neat thing. They had her on a narrative about, very deserving. She is a self-contained special ed teacher. So that's a big celebration. I will also be recognized as another teacher, our Teacher Pride Tuesday coming up this week. She does not know that yet, that's under packets and we'll, so that's not out there for her to hear about that just yet, so.
Keep that as a reminder.
Yeah, yeah, of course. Another celebration, our fall concert, I'm not sure if any of you guys were there. That draws a really big crowd. I mean, it was packed, went well, very smooth, kids did a great job. They worked on that for some time, so it's a big deal in the elementary. Which we have our first and second Merry Christmas concert will be happening December the 7th, I believe, which that's another, maybe a little bit larger event. Always say next to graduation, that's one of the biggest things that we have in the gymnasium there, so you were there, it was a big crowd. Also a celebration, last Wednesday was Body Part Imagination Library kickoff. I know you guys may be familiar with that. But this year they're working with PAT, like they have in the past, there's a really big push with DESI involved to get books in kids' hands from zero to five years old. Those are free. Our district's always been available. They're asking parents to go on there and sign up for that free book. My kids got that, it was great, the good books, but that's a, that's a current big push. PAT, our Parents as Teachers, is getting very involved in working with kids as well. I think next, next month, we may share a little more from Parents as Teacher Program, but Cassie Jones does that, do a good job, does a good job. I know this year I've been much more involved than the previous years, and I think it's kind of common follow districts of getting more participation. Also, one of, a new initiative from DESI, I think we talked about this, but our reading success plans, which we call them student success plans, is off and rolling. That requires a lot of works and some, some fine tuning there, but we are working on that, and that is a plan to help kids get onto the reading level they should be at the grade level, so another big push there. And again, everything, a lot of things you do in the elementary world is involved around getting kids to read at the level they need to. That's a big push. A big celebration from our parent-teacher conferences. We had 399 conferences out of 429 there possible show up, which that was good. I know our enrollment's larger than that, but that's how many came in, which is a good turnout for us, and we were excited about that. So I forgot what percentage, but it's a high percentage. Upcoming events, as you know, we're approaching Thanksgiving Day. Kindergarten has a little Thanksgiving program during the day. Anything involved with little kids brings in a good turnout, so we'll have a lot of people on campus the 21st. Christmas concert, I mentioned that a while ago, and I already touched base about the Parents as Teachers program. We'll get ready to do some more I-Ready testing, that's also coming up near the break. We do that twice a year for kindergarten, three times a year for the other grade levels. And one more thing I want to add that's going on in elementary we're excited about, although that may not be a major thing to you guys, is we're working on a pulley system for that huge curtain in our cafeteria. If you ever watch us push that thing back, you'll realize there's a little bit of work, so we're going to get a pulley system, and Dr. Spence is gracious enough for us to do that, and we're actually excited about that because we signed that curtain back and forth several times. So, any questions?
Do I understand what you said correctly? You said we have 429 students and we have parents on there?
No, that number, I'm not sure, I'm not sure where I got that.
But we have parents of 399?
Yeah, I think I missed a class in there because we have 400, as you see, 489 enrollments, so I'm not sure what I did wrong.
Well, that'd be like a 95%.
We have a very good turnout for parent-teacher conference, and if they don't show, we try to, we count them, answer the call and have a conference on the phone, we count that, so.
So.
Somewhere near, I'm not sure of my number.
You mentioned reading. We're going to do their second I-Ready test in December, is that right?
Yeah, for elementary grades. Kindergarten does their first, so we'll actually start doing that real soon, maybe around 40 soon. Anything else? Alright, thanks guys.
Thank you. Mr. Rogers?
Sarah, Ms. Presser did a wonderful job. That song at the end with the lights and all that, you say?
Yeah, she did.
Very impressive.
Of course, you know, that takes a little bit of work and practice with not many lights, not many elementary hands, and they did a great job.
Yeah, it was good.
They did, thank you.
Dr. Johnson?
We're going to wait on Dr. Johnson.
Oh, okay.
Go Mr. Schmidt first.
If you notice, there's some mistakes on here that I caught just a while ago. Didn't change the date on there, but we do have these numbers now. We haven't had these all year due to infinite campus, but we finally figured out how to get those numbers, so we added those in this month. Things of note, we had two runners qualify for state cross-country, Joel and Carson Smith, and I think they ran pretty close to personal best up there. It was nice weather and a beautiful course in Columbia, and so congratulations to them. The other night we had, and I forgot to count how many, students inducted to NHS. There's a nice big group of NHS members now, which the first year I got here, I think there was, I think, two or three, and then they inducted a few more, but that, that's grown. We've got some, some good people in there, they're doing some good things. FFA went to national convention. If you follow social media, you saw some of the things that they did there, they had a good time. Student led conferences, we had a pretty good turnout as well. Arrive a Live Tour, we got them for two days at the end of October, and that's a thing that costs about $2,500 a day to have them here, and we were able to get them, thanks to Officer Cunningham, we were able to get them to come for free. It did not cost us anything. Students got to use the simulator, Nolan got to use the simulator. So to see about distracted driving, and I think that students enjoyed that, got some good, good practice there. The Veterans Day Assembly on Friday, student organize, student run, and I thought it was a very good assembly. They started with the breakfast, and then the veterans toured through the building, and I think there was, I think they probably enjoyed that the most, and then the assembly was, was very good as well. Upcoming visits tomorrow, there's a group of 12 of us going to St. Louis to visit Hancock Place School District in St. Louis. They do some competency-based learning, and their principal has done this in Maine and New Hampshire, I think, and then has bringing that to St. Louis, and that's one of the things that we've been looking at with the Success Ready Student Network, our trip that we took to Wisconsin. So we're going to go up there. I'd seen some information on them, checked them out, and they are a lot like us. They're similar size, similar demographics, similar socio-economic, so good place to visit, get some ideas. Their principal's been very hospitable, and also saw that they are doing a session at the Powerful Learning Conference. So we're hoping to learn some things there. Ms. Miller is one of the teachers that's going. Josh is going, Dr. Johnson's going, Dr. Spence is going, and we've got some other teachers going as well, so hopefully we can bring some things back from that. Of course, basketball's kicked off from middle school and getting ready to kick off for high school, so things are not going to slow down anytime soon. Any questions?
Thank you.
We'll delve back to Dr. Johnson's interview story, 6th grade. Go do Ms. Barker.
Ms. Barker?
Sorry. Mr. Perkins, and then.
I wouldn't know how to do any of that.
World's Special Ed is always busy over the past few months. First week we've had an increasingly large number of new special ed students enrolled in the district. As of today, we were up to 55 new special ed students in this group, so seems like we've got an influx of new kiddos in this year. Outside of that, we, we've been taking special ed referrals, and we're in the process and have consent and testing. Our 34th student already this year for, for special ed eligibility. I met with the administrative team one day last week, working on some discipline data information, where we took the last two years' data and looked over some trends over students that were, that had IDPs that were disciplined in certain areas that, that we found that were common amongst buildings and ways that we can improve kind of our discipline process and taking a look at that data a little closer. It was a pretty good work session that we had. And then Monday and Tuesday of last week, I attended Grants for School Conference in Branson. The presenter, she travels around with the nation and presents, it's kind of her side gig. She was administrator for several years, but she, not necessarily as informative as it was, a toolbox of ideas and resources to assist our school district in finding and locating grants for, for schools. She did a very good job in the day and half I was there. We actually started and drafted our first grant. It's kind of a working session as well, from easy grants, anything that is below $5,000, to foundation grants, which would be anything larger than $5,000. So we've learned how to create a profile sheet that we can share with the administrative team, and then they can use that as well as, we have several templates and samples and resources that are Missouri-specific into helping find funds for projects and activities that support those students better. Any questions?
No. It's good to hear about the linking of the data on the discipline, special ed students. I don't know that we've ever done that before.
Well, we, we were targeted for a trend over the past two years. In 21, 22 school year, students with IDPs were disciplined six times more than students without IDPs, and then in 22, 23, there were four times more. And so we kind of broke that data apart and looked at what were some common things, what building-specific things we needed to, or could look at and improve on. I think as a team, we decided that we might want to look at that a little closer every quarter. I had Mr. Reiner to run those reports for us, so we can kind of see areas that we can make adjustments and assist those students better.
Alright. Thank you. Nolan?
Alright.
Nolan, you have to stand up now.
Yes.
You've gone, they made the decision to start standing up, so here we are.
I really appreciate that, but, okay.
See what happens when you miss?
I'm very sorry that I missed. I guess it's my punishment.
You were running, so there was a, so you had a legitimate reason.
Alright, so I guess I'll start. I just have some rundowns of the clubs for this time, so I'll start with the FFA. This year, the FFA chapter is thriving, according to Ian Kurtz. They have 13 lucky, hardworking FFA members. They sent 13 lucky, hardworking FFA members to the 96 National FFA Convention, where members attend leadership sessions and toured Pharaoh's Farm and participated in pingball. They also held their annual cattle working, where one of the little teams placed second out of nine teams from the surrounding schools. Their fruit and meat sales coming to a conclusion this week, and the meat items being delivered today. A couple weeks ago, they took some officers, the officer team and five students to our area fall speaking events, where the officer teams placed second in rituals, and Katie Spence and Colton Stoll were both delivered speeches and advanced to districts. Katie's speech was about sheep production and earned her first place, and Colton's speech was about young farmer, young, young farmer, young farm, farm wives, and got him second place. At the district level, Katie got second with her speech, and Colton stole place first, advancing him to state. FBLA, they got a lot going on. FBLA is firing on all cylinders, 52 members this year, and they're, we're trying to get as much involved as possible. Air Media Productions has been working on all the Club of the Week videos, and also Teacher Pride videos, and the morning news every morning, and is now gearing up for the basketball season. Their first live stream is being opening night, the 21st, and we're going to start selling sponsorships to help with the program. Also, we're partnering with the Chamber and just trying to get as much student, community involvement as we can. We helped to save Bear City Fest along with Trump Treat, had a booth there. Then also, the food harvest is currently going on, we, the, and that's going on through the 17th. The school store's been doing very well, carrying some new items, and we also have a new register this year. It's a, it's like the one at Pizza Maracana that you see. And then we've also started signing our credit events for the district conference coming up. Art Club has around 20 members this year. They have raised money, and they raised money very fast during the base painting, you saw their booth there. They also took a trip to the Harmington West Plains to view their fall art show. Everyone had to vote on their favorite piece, which is, what decides the People's Choice Award at the art show. They did door greeting this morning. And November 30th through December 2nd, Art Club assisted with the Will Springs Art Council invitation to art show at the Park City Building. Six other schools are invited to participate. That includes Ava, Thayer, Mountain Grove, Cabo, West Plains and Mountain View. SCCLA, they didn't give me very much information. She said that she wants to wait until they're presenting here in December, so SCCLA has gone on many trips that allow members to gain more leadership skills. This allows SCCLA members to get an idea that they can implement on our chapter. This has been several events, and this has been several events we have hosted already this year, such as the Veterans Day Breakfast Assembly. And then Interact Club, they sent nine kids to the Traction Workshop in St. Louis. This event was an interact workshop on seatbelt use, distracted driving and speeding and paratropping. Additional activities focused on the team building leadership and skills action, plan development. So they're just learning leadership skills, so that's all I have for you this morning.
Thank you, Nolan. Any questions for Nolan?
No, but Mari, I want to hear about the sheep thing.
Well, that's, that would be my daughter, Katie, and I really can't tell you much about the sheep thing. We don't have sheep, but she made a speech on, and did really well, so we're proud.
Sounds like your comments are in that way.
I have no, no comment on that.
Alright, well, now it's your turn.
I was going to wait to be called, though.
Yeah.
To start with, our, our numbers are pretty steady, hanging out right there, 360, 365. I think we've actually added a couple, so pretty steady there. Some things that we've had going on at the middle school, we had our Fall Social on November the 3rd. That went really good, it was really well-attended. Ms. Drake is in charge of our student leadership, and she did a really nice job planning that. We had a bunch of teachers that stepped up and helped out with that, and the kids had an absolute ball, and it was very well-attended, so that was a nice event that took place. Our winter sports are underway, boys and girls basketball, and I'm sure you can find a schedule somewhere on the website, and it's probably been posted. The junior high boys, if you remember the junior high girls, we took a girls' group to S&amp;T. We also took a boys' group to S&amp;T. It was a little bit different day, but Sergey and Mr. Keratinov took a group of boys to S&amp;T to tour them, and they had some special stuff going on that day revolving around STEM. Had a really nice Veterans Day Assembly. I know that that's already been talked about, so I'm not going to spend a lot of time on that, but it was student-led, and it was, it was very nice. Tomorrow, we've been looking forward to our visit to Hancock. Competency-based learning is what we're going to be looking at, so it's mostly going to be high school stuff though, right, that we see tomorrow.
Inaction High School, but they will have teachers available.
We're going to, we're taking a group from the middle school as well, and so we will have the opportunity to talk to, my understanding is, middle school principal, middle school teachers, things like that. So looking forward to that. And the middle school assembly that we've got coming up on the 21st is just a celebration assembly. You could actually probably talk a little bit about that assembly if you'd like.
We just wanted to do a little extra thing for the kids in that Culture and Climate Committee I'm part of. We've been trying to plan some more, so we thought Thanksgiving would be a good holiday, kind of just talk about being thankful. So we're going to have some student involvement with the student leadership, kind of presenting some games, our media teams getting a little video for that. So we're just kind of, kind of get the kids involved and, you know, talk about what we're thankful for, so.
So we're looking forward to that. And then some celebrations at the middle school, we celebrated the end of the first quarter. Culture and Climate Committee stepped up big with planning, all of that stuff. And that's just a group of teachers, basically, we have a couple from each grade level that step up and they help plan all these events, so that's really nice to have them, and they put a lot of work into it. If you remember, last year we did a quarterly bear hunt activity, and that's where we reward kids basically quarterly. And then this year, we did our Student of the Month. We've kind of changed that up a little bit, so we backed that off to like a quarterly reward, where we recognize character traits, and we recognized all those recipients for that in an assembly, where students from each grade level were recognized for seven character traits, and each student received a gift card from Robert Hollis, your local insurance. So that was really, really nice, and it was a really nice reward for those kids to, to be recognized in front of the entire school. So that was, that was good. Student-led conferences went very well. I don't know what our percentage of attendance was, but it had to be fairly high. I mean, we had a ton of people, our teachers did a really good job contacting the parents, making those phone calls if they couldn't meet, staying before and after school on other days to meet with parents when it was convenient for them. So I really appreciate the teachers stepping up there. And again, just make, took the extra effort to make contact with the parents, which I think is important. At the middle school, we had the student leadership team kind of stepped up, and we had popcorn and all kinds of stuff going on in the hallway, just to try to, try to make it more inviting for parents, so it was, it was a nice evening. Teachers had a PD day on the 30th. We're just continuing to work hard at refining the RTI process. Each grade level's kind of approached that a little bit different, and we've had a few things that have worked really well, and we're finding out some things that are not working as well, and we're making changes there, so that's a continual growing process. But the main thing is, is I'm really proud of the staff and the mindset that we have. I feel like everybody's working as a team, and everybody's willing to try new things, so that's been really nice to see. I'm sure there's something else I'm forgetting, but anything else? Any questions on the board report? Okay, so next up, we have our 6th grade science club. We have Ms. Welch, who teaches science, and then we have Ms. Miller, who helps out with this club. It's after-school club, and I will just let you kind of take it from here, and.
Alright, so I am Shaila Welch, and like you said, with the help of Heather Miller, we've been hosting an after-school weekly science club. So today, we had lots of members that wanted to come, so we have Elena, we have Kayle, Thomas, Aileen, Aubrey and Jax, and they're going to tell you about what we've been doing. So, go ahead, say it.
We learned about sound and how it travels, so we made V sounds out of paper. Week two, we learned about air friction, and we made parachutes out of paper, and we tested them by dropping off the building, dropping them off the building, so.
For week four, we learned about potential and kinetic energy. We made catapults out of obstacle sticks and rubber bands, along with a plastic spoon.
On the day we did pendulum painting, we learned that inertia is what keeps the pendulum going up and that revenue falls down. We created paintings with yarn, paint and a cup. We swung the cup and the paint came out of the bar, and that's how we created the painting.
We did community service to help the economy and to help the school up. We picked up trash to help clean up the school grounds. We did that so the playgrounds and the gym could, gyms could be cleaned. We did this to have a clean environment.
We adapted to our parachute idea, and instead of slowing it down, we made the glider's whistle with the wind.
Me and my science club members want a real-world experience, like going to a cave or water monitoring a river.
Thank you for listening to our presentation. If you guys have any questions, please voice them now.
I've got a question. The paper you're holding, did you create that with the pendulum?
Uh, yeah.
Okay, so.
Can you press it around or bring it around a little bit?
It was swinging back and forth?
Yeah, it was swinging back and forth.
And did it have a marker on it?
No. It had paint in the bottom of the cup, and there was a hole in the bottom of the cup, and that's how the paint.
Okay.
So you practice questions, so you have a question.
This is a virtual, free of their own?
Yes. Their own free old thing.
Did you say you were going to try to go to a cave?
Yes.
Did you say you were going to try to go to a cave, and what do you want to find in that cave? Why did you, why did you choose a cave?
I think.
I have a number of ideas, and they all still had thought of something that they need to talk about today. But in our, our current 6th grade, we also learn about caves, and so it'd just kind of be, we were going to do a whole grade trip to a cave, but finding a cave that can get 100 kids within a day and two is kind of hard, so we thought that's something that they could do, you know, our science club on, you know, on a Saturday or something.
Mr. Gump, can you help with that?
Sure.
I don't know that they want that.
We didn't want a disclaimer. We didn't want a disclaimer.
I advise don't. It's horrible.
Um, the parachute, uh, did you have a weight attached to it?
Uh, yeah, we had a paper clip. We had yarn and we just put a paper clip at the bottom for the weight. She had a, a variety of different sizes on, that you put on there.
What kind of material did you make the parachute out of?
Man, out of paper.
Sounds like a lot of fun.
At one point, we tried plastic, but...
It didn't, it didn't work. Some of us couldn't get it to cut.
So have you learned anything through these different, uh, projects you've done?
Uh, yeah. Yeah, she learned more than we just would going to regular school about, and learning about them. Uh, it was kinda just like an add-on of what we learned.
Like a small group call.
Yeah.
Do any of you try these experiments like at home? Do you take it home with you?
Once I tried doing the pendulum painting at home and it didn't really work because my brain decided to use glitter glue instead of paint.
That sounds fun.
Yeah, Kyle.
How often does he does me?
He didn't think of that.
Every Wednesday.
Every Wednesday?
Sounds great. Very good guy.
Very good.
Thank you guys for having us.
Thank you.
Thank you guys for coming.
Well, are we ready now for an update from the MSBA meeting?
I think we are. Um, Matt and Debbie and I attended the MSBA meeting, um, just last week. Yeah, yeah, and, uh, a really good conference and I'll let them share about, uh, some of the experiences they had, some of the, the things they learned.
I enjoyed it. I, I, all the, the meetings that I attended was very well-spoken people and knowledgeable and I learned a lot that I didn't realize went on.
Uh, I think it's, you know, it's a lot of effort to get up there and, and take the time to do it, but, uh, you always seem to come away with something different and, and it's good to refresh on a lot of the stuff that we know or, or should know. And, uh, we, I think I attended one, my, our first meeting Debbie and I attended was just, uh, kind of the roles of the board member and being in your lane and, and what, what we should involve ourselves in, what we shouldn't involve ourselves in. I think that's always a good, good topic for us to, to re-refresh on and, and what we're, you know, what we can have information and, and what we need to kinda stay away from. And then the, the second one I attended was, uh, about, um, what qualifies as free speech. You know, somebody wants to have a certain shirt or a certain flag, whether it's an employee or whether it's a student and, and what, uh, what constitutes free speech inside of the, the school building or, you know, when kids are present, when aren't present. And what I gathered from that is you should probably talk to a lawyer about every situation.
Mine, mine was empowered women when you were at that one and I, I came out thinking I could conquer the world. You know, and then those ladies in there, there was a couple of attorneys and they were just really talking about how women had became leaps and bounds and took so much, um, more, um, lead in the environment of the school and the school system and what they had brought to the table that hadn't been there before and, or that had been there that didn't fly. And it was really quite interesting that some of the roles that, that come out of, yeah, and, and, and another thing that they talked a lot about was when they lose girls in the school of their reputation or their, um, self-worth or, you know, um, just being a girl, you know, that you're not, you know, you're a girl. And that was from, um, fifth grade to, uh, ninth grade was when you can really empower that girl to think that she can do anything or she can do nothing. And so that was really interesting that, and the numbers, you know, there was like thirty-seven percent of the girls that, you know, it just came into fifth grade thinking that they could conquer the world and went into high school thinking, I'm gonna try to just go under the wire and get out of here because of how that they were treated or at home or their peers or, you know, just there, there was not enough empowerment of the girls. So it was really interesting.
I think it's always a good opportunity too for us to talk to other board, board members of school districts and kinda see what people are doing and just, you know, have that, uh, you know, interaction with them and bounce ideas off of people and so. Like I said, it's, it's not easy to get your schedules together and go to it, but I think, uh, I think it's something I've done for the last two years. I would encourage other board members to pursue it as well. I think it's just a good opportunity to, to, uh, you know, make sure where you need to be as a board member.
I was a delegate.
Yeah.
To vote.
Yeah.
And that was really interesting to go in and have that paddle and it was a, they'd voted on something that actually didn't mean anything to us because it was in the Santa Lucia areas where they would, um, file for their, um, position on the board, whether they would go to one school or they would go to their own school. So it really had nothing to do with us, but...
Do you represent the board?
I represent, yes, I, I voted for the same person.
We also, uh, had a general session on AI and how that's impacting schools. And, um, I know Andrew went to a, a separate session just on, um, artificial intelligence and, and what that's, uh, what that's doing to our districts, so good to get caught up on that. Um, that's maybe a, a presentation for the board at, at some point, um, and then these two accidentally, I think, got into a session with, with Glenn Moore.
We did, yes.
So that was, that was traumatic for them.
Yes. I will say this, uh, Glenn was probably the most charismatic presenter that's ever been to a conference.
You know that.
He got mad out of that break.
I recognize it.
And also one of the, one of the things I, you know, going to these conferences, you never know exactly what you're gonna come away with. Um, and one of the sessions I said it had nothing to do at all with cell phones, but there was a, there was a little side conversation that just kinda veered into that, um, that gave us something I think we're gonna continue to talk about as an admin team and, and a way to kind of address the cellphone epidemic that, uh, that we have. So, um, that was a good little nugget that, uh, that we could bring back and, and start to work on. That's good, Trey?
Sounds good. Thank you guys for going, taking the time to talk out of your schedule. Alright, Mr. Owen.
Yes. It's been a little bit, I think the last time that, um, that we had a chance to chat was right before school, if I remember right, up at the CTE building. So I'm gonna give you guys a kind of a quick rundown of kind of the last three months or the first quarter, um, first notice far getting the groove of transportation and, and class changes, student movements and new programs. I, uh, you know, kinda going into that with everything new, new buildings, new programs, new instructors to those programs, um, new bus scheduling with that. I was, uh, kinda panicked myself and was freaked out a little bit about that, thinking that there was some big monster that nobody had really considered or, you know, just, just all the things that go wrong. Um, that went amazingly well. I was, uh, I was very pleased with, uh, after a day or two, how quickly the students settled into their new routine, how quickly that Barb, our bus driver, got into a system that made sense to her with, with what we were doing. And, and credit to, to our teachers, um, it's not been an easy transition. Uh, expect Mr. Knapp, Mrs. Lee, uh, Mr. Wickens, all three of those have been, kind of been multiple locations and if you know any of them, like they're involved in a lot, like their hands are just in a lot of different components. And so for them to kind of step into a new role and doing that part-time in a separate location, I know has been stressful and challenging for them and they, they've been superb with that. Uh, just a quick rundown kind of of what, uh, aviation, criminal justice and carpentry has been, has been going through on the first quarter. You can see with aviation, they spend two days a week, um, using what we call our daily use drones, which are just some inexpensive drones, getting their, uh, kinda getting their feel for the machines. Um, we did this last week get in a, uh, a new unit that they've been waiting on, uh, Scotty O2, which I'm not a grown guy, but I know Mr. Knapp and the students have been feverishly waiting for this to show up. Um, the, uh, the ability, uh, technology with this unit, um, and this is actually, this is a, some footage that, that the students put together themselves. They, they just got this in their hands to use Friday. So, uh, the students, all six of the students took this machine and they, they set separate waypoints that they wanted this machine to coordinate and fly to and, and Mr. Knapp was given the simple assignment of just literally taking some footage around the, the north and south building. And so each student kinda had an assignment of how they wanted the drone to articulate in the air and what angles that they wanted that drone to capture the building or the scenery around that. And then to obviously to return that back to the landing point. So, um, this is exciting for them, you know, we, uh, and also exciting, you know, for our, for our media department. This, uh, this has some film quality that we've not been able to, uh, to capture before and I think having that, that piece in the hands of our, of our aviation class and working in conjunction with our, uh, with our media program, um, I, I think we can do some cool stuff with that. I think the students can do some unique projects with this and especially with more time. This is literally their, their very first, um, experience with that and, and getting a chance for all the, all the students to actually have control, you know, of that unit itself. So, um, criminal justice, uh, kinda working the same thing, you know, there, uh, I asked Mr. Wickens today to kinda give me a brief rundown as far as the, uh, the topical things that they've been covering in their class, uh, public safety systems, ethical practices, terminology, uh, defining crime, law enforcement constitutions, tactical entry. And then they also spend some time each week with, uh, their practicals consisting of handcuffing, building clearing. Um, here's a video that I think Mr. Perkins is involved with here out of our media class that actually had a chance at the end of last week filming some of the CJ students with Mr. Wickens, um, doing a mock building clearing in the, in the north building right now.
Nice editing effects there.
Yes, yeah. They also, uh, you know, part of their, uh, part of their curriculum, you know, on a weekly basis, they spend on, on physical and self-defense training. Uh, and I don't know, I, I should have included some, some pictures and footage. I don't know if you guys have seen kind of their, cause I don't think it was completed whenever you guys were there before, but we did, we did finalize a, uh, kind of a dedicated, um, defense tactic and sparring room for, for criminal justice that is shared with our staff workout equipment. It's in the basement of, of the south building and, and I don't think that that was completed, uh, upon the tour, uh, before the year started. And, uh, and our carpentry class, last one kinda that I want to touch on really quick, um, they, uh, due to kind of the amount of work that, as you guys know, that we have on campus right now, you know, our, our second-year students, uh, they got thrown in immediately to work. Like they showed up and we took attendance and pretty well put tools in their hands, you know. They, they did have some experience coming from South Central last year, uh, so they have, uh, it's been very intense for, for my core carpentry students. Uh, our first-year students, we had three first-year students this year in that program. Uh, we had to dedicate the first weekend half to get them to their OSHA 10 certification, which they all got through that, that process. Here's some, just some random footage of, uh, of different projects and this would be in the weight training facility and the south modot building or the, the opportunity hall, I think that's what we're going with, so if we've got...
Yeah, that's kinda...
So, south modot building right now. So, um, yes, and that, and this has been, this has been great, uh, you know, from, you guys know my background, obviously being in the construction industry, this is a, this has been a pretty fulfilling experience, you know, getting to, getting to see these guys show up. And, and it's amazing, I know that, that, uh, you know, there's several of those students that, that probably aren't the best fit in your traditional classroom setting and they walk in and they're, they're excited to get to work and to grab the tools and they've already thought about like what they're gonna be doing that day. When they get there, they, they, they've already mentally processed like what the next step is gonna be. And, uh, and that's what you want to see, that's encouraging to me to, to see students planning and thinking about that and carrying that to, uh, to putting theirself and making sure that they've got the right materials and the equipment to do the next op, step in the, in the process. Um, where we are now, so just a quick facilities update. If you didn't know, we, we kinda finished everything in Mrs. Lee's, uh, room to get her moved out of the high school. So she started the year in the high school and until this, I think just a few weeks ago, she had been in the high school. Um, part of that was we didn't, we wasn't a hundred percent ready in her room. The other part of that was she was assisting Ms. Johnson, which was new to her position. And, uh, Ms. Johnson, Mrs. Lee, um, their, their programs mingle, for lack of a better term, quite a bit. And so, you know, Sabrina felt, felt an obligation to stay close to Mrs. Johnson, kinda get her feet on the ground. And so it, it kinda got to a point where, where Mrs. Johnson was feeling more comfortable and we were able to get her room to a point where we got her position. So she is now full-time in the south building. Um, carpentry is just, uh, is just getting close to finishing up the work in Mrs. Johnson's future classroom and the, the bonus workroom that's attached to that. And I don't know if you guys remember, but that would be located, whenever you walk in the upper door there, there's, uh, me and Ms. Jenny's offices on the left immediately. There was a, a large classroom to your left, right past that. We had to remove some walls and reframe some walls there. We've done an addition onto that room, adding to the large four-year area. Uh, that addition will be a shared workroom and, and storage room for Mrs. Johnson and Mrs. Lee both. Uh, their, their resources are, are code-used between them. Um, a lot of Mrs. Lee's equipment that she currently has in her classroom that takes up a lot of real estate, such as her, she's got a, a new, like a nine-foot-long printer plotter, which is a phenomenal piece of e-equipment, T-shirt press, hat press, poster printer, all of that will be kinda contained in this workroom. So carpentry is getting ready to kinda finish their part with that. I'm gonna be able to start grinding on the floors and, and I, I don't see any reason we can't have that operation. We'll have Mrs. Johnson in place by semester break. Um, next to Mrs. Johnson's room, the next room down will be Mr. Knapp's room and it is currently under construction also. Um, again, I, uh, it will be completed shortly after Mrs. Johnson's room, some point into third quarter. I don't think we'll be very deep into the year before, before we'll be able to get Mr. Knapp some separation out of Mr. Wickens's room. They have co-talk kind of in the same area, just out of necessity at this point, but we're, we're about to get past that hurdle. And then just continuing to work on the north building. Um, that is, uh, up to this point, that is, that is virtually all been the Ag students doing that work. Uh, as soon as we can get, uh, the Johnson-Knapp renovation kinda done there in the south building, then I intend to, to kinda transition the, uh, the carpentry students to the north building to assist with Ag there. And, uh, we need to start expediting that process along. Um, they, they got all the carpet removed from, from the, uh, from the north half and the south half of that building. They've removed some walls in the north half of that building and we're getting ready to start some demo work in the south half there too. So, and, and this is a, so another project we're, we're just kinda starting on, um, is a, a career pathway to teaching profession. So, uh, kind of a new CTE class option that we would like to make available to our students, uh, and, and, and beginning this next year. Mr. Smith kind of, uh, lightly mentioned this as a, as an offering to, uh, to the high school staff and, and maybe Wilson instantly jumped on this and, and, and immediately started doing homework and showed some passion on being able to, to figure out how to make this available and got in contact with, uh, with Ozark Mountain Technical College in Mountain Grove, which they currently offer this program. Right now, our only option for our students is, is an online option for this. So this is something that they don't have an option to be in a seated class to, uh, to receive this. So, so Ms. Wilson, um, done a trip visit to Mountain Grove, was able to put her eyes on what that program consisted of and, and through the kinda generosity of, of their, their teacher and Lisa Watson, which is their director, started getting us some information and resources on what it would look like for us to put this program in place and become kind of a parent pretty quick that this is something that we felt like that we could integrate into her schedule, her existing schedule that she's doing with just a few tweaks. We can do this in her classroom in the high school. Um, part of, kind of the second year for this program is, is essentially the work base and the practical side of that. So essentially that's putting students in classrooms and that can be anywhere from elementary up through high school. And, and because logistically of, of that requirement, it just made more sense to keep that program on campus instead of trying to facilitate that off on, on our corner of campus. Uh, first year, you know, to kind of briefly summarize this, um, the way I kind of put this together in my mind, the first year the students... the first year the student, they're in a classroom and they're being taught how to be an educator. The second year, it turns into that student being placed into a classroom and then slowly transitioning into the educator role. And, and the goal here is to get the student prep to where they can be comfortable taking their par certification and the educational fundamental certification through FACS. This, through DESI, the, this pathways, the teaching profession is kind of under their FACS umbrella, family consumer sciences. And it just happened to work out that Ms. Wilson has that certification already. So that's another, you know, another big step for us that, that logistically made this a, a very attractive option. And, and we're just kind of started communication with MSU West Plains. Mountain Grove currently has this offering there. And, and they get a, a dual credit arrangement of three courses or seven credit hours for their students, you know, towards that, towards their future certification. So I know that's a mouthful, we can stop there for a second if you guys have any questions about that or what that would look like. And we don't have, again, not all the details are kind of work finished. We're just kind of getting our feet wet with starting the process. I don't see any, logistically any red flags to, compared to the other programs that we kind of worked through last year to get them in place, this is, this is far simpler and I think will be a lot quicker and cleaner. It's a, I feel like a really, for lack of a better word, it's a pretty safe bet for us as a school. We're not really needing to add any additional resources to make this happen, any additional facilities. There's not a lot of, a lot of logistical or physical work that it's going to require to, to put this into place.
This parallels exactly what we've talked about with grow your own initiatives from.
And it's just, you know, my, just a personal feeling, I just think it'd be a, you know, if you, if you start looking at kind of some studies, I, I found some, some, some percentages in most of, you know, your high school area, like comprehensive high schools or career centers that offer this. Usually it lands between sixty and seventy percent as far as the students that go through that program, that go into education, returning back to their home school as, as an educator, which I thought was fascinating. And I thought, how kind of rewarding would that be to kind of play a part, you know, in, in, in preparing a student to step into the education field and then seeing them return, you know, hopefully back to, to their area, you know, either to your district or a district in that area.
We're talking about doing this next year?
I think we can, yes, yes. I, I think it won't be a semester, it would be, it'd be the beginning of, of next year, yes.
We're, I think Ms. Wilson is going to come up with a survey for students and try to see how many students we would have interested in, in doing that.
One thing that might help that start an FTA chapter.
They do different at Mountain Grove and, and Ms. Wilson likes that. It's similar, but it's called educators rising.
Yes.
So it's similar to FTA, but it's kind of like some of those other CTE programs where they have competitions and things that the kids can be involved in through the teaching part.
Yeah, but we're, this is.
It's a win-win.
This is exciting, you know, and it's actually, it's kind of amazing to me how quickly and seem like all the right ingredients are kind of falling into place to really, really make that an option. I, I think we'll, I think we'll see some reward out of that.
We need to survey the students, you're thinking?
She's working on a survey, so hopefully fairly soon. We, we want to kind of get a number so we can be able to visit with them and engage the interest.
Now, will her position have to be replaced or is this?
No.
She's, so.
We can alter her kind of schedule a little bit and, and I think fit this in. And this, so the way that DESI approves this, this maybe I should clarify that this is a two-year program. Their requirements as far as the educational hours are not as much as what some other programs are. So like to answer your question, Matt, like this is something that we can put in place. If we can arrange an RN, this would be like an hour and a half block every other day. So it'd be just like, just like any other class that we're currently offering in the high school. It's not a two-block every day requirement from the student.
So you could cover what she does and then do that as well?
Correct, yes, yeah, that's, again, that's kind of one of the ingredients that made this a little more palatable, you know, without, without looking at adding a position or, or replacing her with a, a, you know, another.
You guys have done excellent, you've done very creatively.
Maybe a little more pay there to do on her end, do a split deal, though. It'll increase somewhat.
That's probably not Josh's decision. I wish everybody had more pay, so I'm probably the wrong guy to ask, so.
If she's teaching a dozen blocks, then she would get paid. People compensate for that.
Okay, yes.
But that's not, that's not a benefit package and.
No.
It's not something our teachers are actively pursuing.
Probably got a lot more hands raised in the crowd, whatever Dick brought it up. So, and the last thing, I, you know, I don't know if, if Dr. Spence has had an opportunity to, you know, talk to you guys about this, but kind of a, a opportunity that's presented to us in the CTE world is a memorial donation kind of, and I know everybody here at the table is probably familiar with Pig and Donna Paul. Part of their wishes when they passed was to support some, some school programs and also some other nonprofit programs in the community. So the family's been working on this for a while. And they had a kind of a group meeting at the end of last week. And it's, it's, you know, they felt confident that, that they will be able to give the CTE department at school a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars for us to spread across every department there. There is a, a little bit of guidelines on, on kind of how they wish some of that money to be spent. But for the most part, this is going to be a huge blessing, obviously to, to, to all of the departments. It's not, it's not just the new departments either. This isn't just the departments I'm talking about tonight, you know, but even some of the other programs we've already had in place. So we're, this is a victory, yeah, this is, this is something to celebrate for us.
I mean, obviously that happens.
Not, not very often. And as you guys know, Pig and Donna was obviously massive agriculture background, political background, business background. I mean, their, Donna was a huge advocate for family consumer science studies. Like every, you know, their, their world was, was parallel with a lot of the other, you know, a lot of the other courses that we are offering here. That was definitely, you know, stuff that they spent their life and their interest promoting. So the family thought that would be a, would be a good place to utilize that. So. Anyway, we've kind of covered a lot, I'm trying not to drag it out.
I know some of our classes have six, you said one has six.
So, you know, we kind of, you know, this first year because of, you know, for the most part, it's heavily loaded with juniors, you know, again, some of these classes, carpentry was the only class that we kind of essentially pulled our students out of South Central. So that's why we have second year students, you know, in our carpentry program. You know, as far as like aviation and criminal justice, for the most part, this the way the scheduling worked, that was really only available to juniors only. So, yeah, so those numbers, you know, are not super impressive this year by any means. Obviously, we're hoping that, you know, next year when that becomes, you know, we will have second year students in those programs plus the juniors coming in. I, I see, you know, that those numbers will be boosted some.
Are the, other than the ag program, all of the classes in those buildings, they're all new CTE. We didn't move anything from the high school over there that was pre-existing.
Mrs. Lee, so her, her programs would not necessarily be new. Some of the, some of the equipment and, you know, the, the resources she has there is definitely upgraded and new. But no, her, her program was an existing program in high school.
That's the only one?
That is the only one, yes, correct, yes.
And when you talk about the drone stuff, do we supply the drones and supply them?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So anybody with carpentry tools, plan.
Correct, yes, so. And the greatest thing, when I mentioned the N H fifty drones earlier, you know, it's a, obviously with students learning how to fly drones and they, we hit the ground and hit some, like there's been some collateral damage.
I remember one in three.
The, the, the cool thing about that is Mr. Knapp, three D prints a lot of replacement parts right there. So it is amazing how much stuff that he just replaces his own three D printer that we don't have to buy, which I didn't even really consider that until he come in sharing a handful of drone parts. And he said, oh, we'll put this back together and give me a little while on my friend, so.
We've flown them for ten years, they'll use those parts.
Yeah, yes, so. No, you know, something I was thinking about today, it's, you know, I know there's been a lot of focus and resources from the board kind of towards this whole CTE expansion, get missed out on some. Is it's been a, you know, watching kind of students come in the whole first quarter and going into a new environment with new resources and being excited to be there. It's been really rewarding, it's been fun.
So. I don't think, I mean, I think it'll grow double next year and all that. And just, you know, we were looking at, wondering that's, you know, I think for some of us.
Well, some of it, hey, some of this work I know was based on, you know, some calculations and, and, you know, forththought. And some of it's been a little bit of a leap of faith and I understand that. But it's been, and for me personally, I'll put it that way, it's been a, a really rewarding experience, the, the first quarter to see new kids come in and be excited to be there. And especially students that you know, you know, probably not the best fit in the main building, but you know, they, they've really found a home.
I would encourage you to go over in the mornings and see some of the stuff going on. And then in the afternoons and see some of that stuff. We were over there Friday to do a little, little bit on the live bulletin. And just seeing the kids do that is, is pretty neat.
Yeah, I'm looking for a rainy day to go.
So, go over and check it out.
Yeah, Josh, I think that speaks volumes right there because, you know, when I, when it first was prevented or presented about the CTE, that's my thought was the kids that aren't fitting, don't have that fit in that main building there. So that was, that's always kind of been my concern is that are those, are those the kids that showed up?
Josh was one of them, I am one, you know, that's.
So that's, that's great to hear.
Yeah, it's, we're, we're having, we're having a good time.
I just want to mention a couple of things before we let Josh off the hook here. Remaining ARPA funds, if you remember, we got a nice donation from the county for ARPA funds. We're down to sixteen thousand five hundred left on that. And that's been, that's been money well spent. We also had a donation from the community with a bunch of tools.
Yes.
And, and building materials.
We've had that several times, yeah. So we've had several different private families that have had donated, you know, just, just tools and materials and equipment. Carpenters Union out of Springfield has made donations. Brad, you know, his, Mr. Seiler, his, his previous employer that he worked through for twenty years out of Springfield, they've made donations to the carpentry program. There's been a, an overwhelming amount of support. That, it's, it's mind-boggling really how much, how much support that there has been kind of putting these programs in place, so.
Community, yeah, tons of community support and hopefully people will come out on the twelfth and take a look. The other, and I've mentioned this to the board back at our, our retreat, but we were looking at naming proposals for those buildings. And as an admin team, we got together and the selections were opportunity for the north building and innovation for the south building. So with the board's blessing, we will, we'll move forward with, with those two names for our buildings. So we'll stop calling them the modot buildings or the north and south building. But the thought there is it's a very CFO kind of model with the north building, with your CTE programs, all the opportunities that provides. And then the ag and in fact, building all the innovation that happens in those programs. So I think those are two very worthy names for those buildings.
They have signs put up out there or something?
Yes.
Those people are going to say, which one's that?
Yeah, we're, we're going to have to really hammer it home that that's the name of the building. Stop calling it the modot building. So, any other questions for Josh? Josh is on. All right, continuing with some construction, just a, a training facility update. And again, I hope you can come out, December twelfth or anytime you want to come by, I'll be happy to show you the, the bare training facility. That will be hopefully open to students next week, Monday and Tuesday before Thanksgiving break. We hope our students in there doing some, doing the first round of workouts. We spent all money on this on, from federal ESER funds. Last month I gave you one, it was either FY twenty-three or FY twenty-four, but I did not give you both. So I apologize for that. But that is combined now FY twenty-three and FY twenty-four, total six hundred thirteen thousand nine hundred forty-seven dollars. I think that's right around what we estimated that project to come in at. Construction, clearly HVAC and the weights. The weights, I think, were about, and that, that comes up at a hundred fifty, a hundred seventy thousand dollars in that range. So that, again, all coming out of ESER, our remaining ESER funds are five hundred fifty-six thousand nine hundred and one dollars. Those funds will be used to continue our CTE renovations and then our middle school entryway that we're looking at. We wrote a safety grant that we received and we'll talk some more about that when we talk about the video cameras here in a minute. But part of that money will go towards that middle school entry as well. And just as an overall health of the budget, we're at twenty point eight five percent unrestricted fund balance. And again, our goal is always twenty percent. So we're still above our goal as far as our, our fund balance. I know ESER tends to get that all kinds out of whack. So until ESER is gone, we just want to continue to make sure we look at that fund balance every so often and make sure it's not even below twenty percent. So that's the, the current numbers for our, our training facility, our ESER funds, as we kind of look forward to putting a bow on the.
So is that, we think that's it then?
That, yeah, I mean, it may be another couple thousand, but that's really close. Yeah, it's finished for all.
What sort of sidewalks or something?
Sidewalks, we've had a little more excavating done out there, but all the major expenses are done.
So the construction and HVAC, is that the, is that the structure?
That's the structure.
And the building and then the, the three hundred and one, that's the interior construction and weights?
And continued construction, yes.
And floor?
Yes, yeah.
And would that include the springboard insulation?
The interior?
Yes.
Part?
Yeah, that's on FY twenty-four. FY twenty-three, like you said, that's going to be your building structure and the bones.
If I remember correctly, I think we estimated the building, the structure somewhere around three hundred and fifty thousand initially. And I think the interior is what's really come back to, to get us on that. It seemed like, and correct me if I'm wrong, it seemed like we were shooting for around five hundred thousand. So we came in considerably higher than what we thought we were going to be at in this building.
When we were doing that though, were we including the weights?
No, we, we were not, we didn't, I don't think any of this existed.
Yeah, I think that was the building, it was about.
The structure, yeah.
You know, the wings are about ways, but it just seemed like it was thrown in there.
Well, so it's going to be, the building's actually, but what you're telling us, the building is probably actually less.
It's going to be under, under budget on the building.
Thirty-five thousand.
The weights were so high.
And the floor, we talked about it. We knew that there was going to be cost there and that we, we also discussed it was probably going to be higher than we.
I think we knew it was going to be more than a thousand dollars, yeah.
And, and so I think that added a lot to the cost that we weren't really aware of how much it was going to be. I don't know if there was a way at the time because the last time we talked about it, they hadn't decided on what to do on the floor or what to do on the weights. So they were getting bids and, and making those decisions. And then that, but that floor and everything that went with the weights was top of the line.
It's good stuff, it's one of those things you don't want to, you don't want to build this and have to redo it in a few years. We want to build it and be done and have something really nice for kids to use for, for years and years. I think that's what we've done.
I, I agree with that. I think we just didn't, I think we, we were somewhere around the five hundred thousand. And we, we went to six hundred and thirteen pretty quick and I don't know that, I mean, we all knew, we all knew that it was taking place, but I, it just, it kind of sneaks up on you at six hundred thousand, you know.
Like going shopping, when you get to the end of your, your shopping trip and realize, more than I thought.
You build a house, you add twenty percent to whatever you think it's going to cost and. Kind of like the H special.
Oh, that's not breaking down.
That went from what, seven hundred?
One, one something, yeah.
CET renovations?
Yes.
Does that include the, okay, what you mean, is that the innovation building?
Yes, yes, so we'll be using.
For AG?
Yeah, yeah, we'll be using it for that, we'll be using it for the B building. You know, a big rotation of everything that will need, will need.
A pretty good.
Yeah, between that and the middle school entry, that's going to, that's going to take care of our ESER funds. I'm, I'm pretty confident.
The, and when I think about that innovation building, still getting all the HVAC.
Oh, yeah.
Up and running and everything, because it's not, it's just.
And we have, we have that already.
Yes, that's underway.
On the way, yes, yeah.
Correct, our, the contracting company from our last communication, I believe the, the control system, which is, has been kind of the Achilles heel of that, of that system this whole time, that is scheduled to be replaced sometime in mid-December. So they've been on campus multiple times. I mean, as soon as we kind of acquired the building, we got the, got the ball rolling on, on that and got back in touch with, you know, with Associated Air Products, who will be handling that. They come down and, and resurveyed just to make sure that they were ordering the right components. And essentially in a, in a nutshell, what they're replacing there is, you know, the, that's a, that's a boiler-chiller system on the building with air hammers inside. But all of the sensors that, that communicate with the boiler and chiller and, and the central unit that, that is designed to control that, none of that is operational and has not been operational for, for quite some time. So essentially the equipment, there doesn't seem to be a lot wrong with that. The problem is, is there nothing to control it. So literally when I say like it, we go over there. So literally when I say like it, uh, we go over there and physically turn the air on and turn the air off, and we go turn the heat on and we turn the heat off, you know, with, with, uh, killing the power to either the, or the gas, you know, the boiler, the power to the, the air conditioning unit. So, um, once the, once it's controlled, once we can get some controls on the system, I don't, um, the, the boiler and chiller themselves and all the air hammers, that, that equipment seems to be operating fine. There's just nothing to tell it what to do, I guess, in, in a nutshell, so.
Um, are we doing, and this doesn't negate anything that anybody, um, for the CTE program, okay? I think they've done an awesome job over there. Are we gonna be able to look at, we've taken on two new building utilities and there's the programs and all that stuff. We got fifty thousand, what was that? It wasn't ESER, but from the county.
Arba.
Arba, and then there's another grant here. Are we gonna be able to see what the CTE program costs the school district as a standalone entity?
Yeah.
At, at some point, I don't think that'd be about, because these are all new programs with new equipment that's going into them and stuff. It would, I think it would be nice to see what that, what that costs.
Especially once they're all up and running.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And with donations, it, it probably offsets a lot of the.
It does, but those are these recurring expenses that we, that we have to look at, for sure.
I think it'd be nice to see that period down.
Yep.
How far out the, this wall gets, all that can be opened up to other schools or, or we still on that roll, maybe someday doing that?
No, I, yes, I'm, I'm, I'm not, collectively, yes, I think we've got a lot of interest and, and a lot of opportunity to open that up, Adam. I, um, me personally, um, I don't, I guess have a, a calendar date set on when I think we would be able to start that process. But I don't really see any reason that as soon as, kind of as soon as we're physically done with Mrs. Johnson's classroom and naproom and we can kind of put together that, like right now, when you walk into the, into the south building or the innovation hall, it, that upper floor looks pretty wild, you know, because it's still a, a demo and construction work zone. Um, and I think I would have, uh, you know, some of the initial conversations I can't imagine that other school districts wouldn't wanna have with us is, is, uh, essentially kind of completion rate of our programs and, and how many students actually attain their, their industry recognized credential in those programs. A lot of that data we're not gonna have, I mean, cause these are so new, we don't know yet. But I, I don't see any reason we can't start that process and start having some conversations with other schools this winter and early spring. Just to make them aware of what we've got available, see what kind of need they have. I mean, you know, I think that's a, a main question, see what kind of interest is, is there, you know, and, and also working around what scheduling that we have available, because it would greatly impact, you know, them to, to at this point, kind of meet our scheduling that we have currently. To have a, a, you know, I, to be honest, I don't have a, a specific date, I guess, that I would feel confident with saying that, you know, by February twenty-third, we'll have all that ironed out. You know, I don't, I don't know that. I don't really see any reason we can't start that process of having some communication and conversations to see what that looks like, you know, here's your.
Alright, any other questions? Then we'll move on to the center.
Okay. I'm gonna keep this short. So I kinda just put this together as, I guess, I thought it was a good statement of what my overall goal has been since I have, uh, been here. And that's to help promote the Willow Springs School District by implementing a strategic communication and marketing plan that effectively engages and informs various stakeholders, including parents, students, staff, and community members in a timely and consistent manner. So that has been what I've been trying to do. And then, um, this is just kind of like the main focus of what I've been doing. Um, I have been really working hard on our social media presence and hopefully you've seen improvement with that over the past few months. Uh, and so that's our district Facebook and then Instagram account. And then back in July or so, I created a athletics Facebook account where, um, I can kind of separate the content because it can kind of get, I don't wanna bog down our, uh, main Facebook account, so I created the athletics one so that we can post some of our athletics content on that. And then, uh, the website and app, I have been a little bit out of time dissecting that, cause it's kind of been a little messy. And so, and it's also a brand new program that, you know, I had never used before. So, um, I've been, you know, teaching myself that program and like I said, a little bit out of time. I'm, you know, going through and removing old stuff, updating stuff. And then with the app, I've just been trying to familiarize myself with that, um, been working with Andrew a lot on both website and app stuff. Um, it's, I feel like it's a pretty good company, Thrill Share, that we're using. A lot of, uh, schools in this area actually use them. And I've, you know, to this point, I've had a really good, uh, you know, interaction with them. They're really responsive, like their customer service is really great. So I've been really impressed with, uh, that company. Uh, getting information to local media, um, and serving as the point of contact. Um, I've been sending out press releases and really, you know, anything that goes on social media, I'm typically also sending that to our, you know, the newspapers and the radio stations, really trying to get our, our kids' accomplishments and stuff, trying to get that more attention and, um, out in the media. And then, uh, content creation, so that's everything from all of the, the graphics on social media that you see, I'm, I'm creating all of that. And then taking photos, videos, writing the press releases, newsletters, et cetera. So I'm not gonna go too much into this, uh, cause I could very easily get into a lot of detail that I, I won't. So, um, this is all our social media analytics and I did the timeframes from when I started until about like last week or so. So it's from about July up until, um, November, mid-November. And so right here, we're looking at our Facebook reach, and so reach, that's, I mean, kind of explains itself, but it just means anytime our content has been seen. Um, and this, so that includes people that don't follow our, like, Facebook account or Instagram account. But, you know, if somebody shared it and then, so somebody else saw it from that way, if they don't follow our page. So that's just anytime somebody has seen one of our posts, um, and it has been seen one point six million. Um, that's an improvement of three thousand percent. And then our Instagram reach has been from like August to November, has been reaching about one thousand one hundred and twenty-one people. That's an increase of about five thousand percent or so. Uh, visits, so that kind of again explains itself, that is how many people are visiting our page. Um, they're not necessarily going and following and liking us, but they just, they have visited it for some reason. Um, yeah, so that's been out, up about two hundred and four percent at forty-six thousand four hundred and eighty-eight people that have been visiting our Facebook page. Um, and six hundred and eighty-four people have been visiting our Instagram profile from about August into mid-November. So that's, yeah, another increase of like a thousand percent. New likes and followers, this is people that are going to our page, they wanna follow us, they wanna continue seeing our content. That has increased by three hundred and twenty-four and that's five hundred and seventy-five percent. New Instagram followers, we have gained a hundred and nine new followers on our Instagram account and that's up about five thousand percent. And then engagement, so this is like anytime somebody likes or hearts, you know, all of that, that's engagement. Comments, that's engagement, and shares, um, that's all considered engagement. So, you know, they're engaging with our posts in some way. Um, and so that shows that the last ninety days, our engagement has been around like twenty thousand. Um, so that's, that's really good. And that's up about three hundred, uh, percent. Um, and again, all of this was from about the time that I had started in July until about last week or so, so mid-November. Um, and I will say, you know, I've worked in social media marketing and I've been also the one that like all do face, I have done Facebook ads in the past where, you know, I'm utilizing money to like boost posts and stuff to get more attention. And all of these numbers were done organically, like we're not paying extra money to, you know, get more likes or get more attention. And so those numbers, like, you don't typically see that organically. So, and I kind of expected that, um, just because, you know, I have been really trying to amp up our, our social presence. So, um, I expected there to be kind of a big surge there the, the first few months. It may start to level out a little bit, just cause, you know, I think we've got like four thousand followers on our Facebook page and you think about the population of Willow. So we're doing really well, um, on social media, the analytics. These are our demographics, which I thought was very interesting. So this is our, our Facebook demographics and this is our Instagram di- uh, demographics. So Facebook, you can kind of see that about the thirty-five to fifty-four age range is kind of our biggest and then so is like forty-five to fifty-four. Um, and so, you know, this kind of just gives me clarification of, okay, like I think we're reaching a lot of our parents. Um, and so I feel like Facebook's a very, our strongest platform by far. And then Instagram, you can definitely see right here, okay, the biggest age here is eighteen to twenty-four. And then you kind of have a surge there of some of the younger gaps there, but, so this is where we're reaching all of our students. You know, um, Instagram is very, very popular among the students. So, and these are our two main platforms I've been focusing on. Um, haven't been doing a ton with Twitter just because, or I guess it's X now. Um, it's kind of just dying off a little bit. School districts aren't doing a ton on there anymore. Uh, I know we still do post like our board meeting links and stuff, but this is what I've been really focusing on. And I feel like these demographics really kind of make me feel like these are the best platforms to focus on. And then this is obviously just like a breakdown of, um, where, you know, um, location wise of where people are viewing some of our stuff. So that's not really a shocker there. And then I just kind of took some screenshots of some of our top performing content on Facebook. Um, our state send-off, I think this was for our tennis girls, that really blew up on Facebook. We had like one point three million, um, had reached one point three million. We had a lot of shares on that post, so again, that's people that aren't following our account and they're, you know, seeing it on their screen. And then, um, that also, that same video had the highest reactions, um, of about two thousand reactions. And then our highest comment post was actually something about the band, which all of the band posts like just went crazy. So it was really cool to see, you know, so many people even from, not from Willow, like, you know, congratulating our students on stuff. I thought that was really neat. So then the website and app, um, I, like I said, I've been really like dissecting it. I'm going in page by page and updating, you know, old stuff. Um, I am working on a, kind of a redesign of our main district page and kind of the layout of it. I just want it to, you know, kind of flow a little bit better and add some new features. Um, the company, Thrill Share, like I said, um, they have some new updates, just design wise, it looks a lot better and makes it flow easier. So I've been working with them and I've, I'm working on a mock-up to kind of finalize both with Andrew and, um, Marty. Um, so hopefully we can have something a little more fresh looking soon. Um, and like I said, I'm, um, really trying to learn best practices for like the app. Um, I've been kind of comparing what other schools are doing, so like Houston, for example, uh, uses the same company and they have an app as well. So I've been kind of downloading all the other schools' apps and I'm just seeing like what they do and, um, in a way, you know, seeing what works best for us and, um, get some ideas from what they're doing and just learning what type of content makes sense to be on the app versus the website and vice versa. Uh, this is some examples of just some of the content that I've been doing. You might've noticed last week I rolled out our first newsletter. I'm gonna try to do those kind of quarterly. Um, I thought it was a good way to kind of recap by quarter some of the major stuff that, you know, occurred. And I also emailed them to our parents, so that way if they're not on, uh, social media, they can still see some of that stuff they may have missed if they weren't on Facebook. Um, this is just an example of a press release I wrote about the school safety grant that we've received. Um, and then this is just, um, some of the stuff that the teachers send in, um, this cute picture of fifth graders. And I've been doing like new teacher features once a week, um, cycling through all of our new hires, just trying to give them some recognition and welcome them. And then, um, that's just an example of some of the athletics stuff I try to post, like when there's a lot of stuff going on on weekly schedule so people can be aware of what's going on. Uh, goals moving, moving forward, uh, just continue to create a more consistent, uh, content presence on all platforms. Um, the redesign of the website, like I mentioned, and then just the app improvement and figuring out, you know, the layout of it and, uh, working with Andrew on, you know, what makes sense for certain, for certain content on it. Um, I wanna continue to build and implement systems for communication and content. So what I mean, what I mean by that is, um, you know, just letting teachers know that they can send me stuff. A lot, a lot have been, um, getting a lot from the middle school. I mean, it's like almost every day, like I have something from the middle school. So I know a lot of them, the principals have been pushing hard to remind teachers to send me stuff. So, um, you know, just working on continuing to, to build that and, you know, let them know that you have so much going on. And, you know, I wanna be able to help like showcase it and sometimes they'll be like, I don't know if this is worthy of being on, you know, Facebook or whatever. It's like, oh, no, of course it is. So just reminding them that like, you know, this is really cool stuff and people wanna see it, even if they don't, they don't think anything of it. Um, continue to build relationships and, um, I want to start learning more about the grant process. And I've asked to meet with Marlena on our next PD day so that I can, um, you know, get with somebody that's experienced with writing grants and the whole grant process. And we would like to get a, like some sort of database and like spreadsheet that's gonna make, um, a better organization of all of our grants. So that way we're not like, where, where are we at with that one or, or whatever? So that way, uh, we can maybe get it added to like our My Willow Bears so that everybody would have access to our grant, um, like, like a good flow of our grants. So, yeah. You guys have any questions for me?
Good job. I've been really going to our page and looking more often. Hats off to you for going all the way to elementary, not just the high school. We're seeing things from other, other grades and I've been enjoying it.
I'm excited about the app improvement, Bob.
Absolutely.
Like schedules on there and stuff like that, yeah. I just looked at the, just happened to look at the boys' basketball schedule and I saw all last year's scores.
Yep.
So.
Yep.
I'll be glad to.
Yes, we are.
Pop that right up in the, in the next game.
Yes, yep, it'd be my, that's my goal is make everything so much easier to access. And, um, I'm still, like I said, learning how to like, you know, how, cause it seems like we have to like contact them to like get certain changes. So it's, it's a learning process, but yeah, um, I've got a lot of ideas for the app.
I, I would second that with, with Coach Colly. I don't, uh, I don't utilize those specific social media platforms, so the app is a, is something that I go to there. My question, do you, uh, do you reach out to, like, for the app, for instance, do you reach out to parents or get any feedback from the community on what, what they need, what they're wanting to see or what they're having? Is there a community connection point with, I know you're providing information. Do you receive any back from them or?
Um, so I've actually made it. I would like to eventually send out like a survey of some sort. Um, I wanted to do it before school started, but that just, that did not happen. Um, but I would like to get input on like how they want to receive information and how they best receive information. Um, cause like I said, not everybody's on Facebook, um, like you said, and so I wanna make sure that we are reaching those people. Um, so I would like to maybe send some more, like a Google form or like a survey of some sort, um, so that I can get that feedback and make sure we are reaching, reaching those, those people.
I enjoy reading the teacher features and you kind of learn a little bit about everybody and, and kind of their, what they like in their personal life a little bit and some things like that, so good job on those. I like those.
It kind of humanizes, you know, cause sometimes people, they don't, they don't look at teachers as, oh, well, they're, you know, they're people too, they've got interests too. And so I think that's one, that's one thing I really like to focus on with those is adding some personal aspects to it.
Anybody that looks at it on a consistent basis is gonna see that there's a lot of stuff that goes on at school that most of us aren't aware of unless we look at the app and see it there or somewhere else. And that's been one of the great things that I've seen is the, you know, the increase in the number of, uh, activities that are presented on that. Pictures of kids, parents love to see pictures of the kids, you know, and they should see them.
We're all about celebrating, celebrating our kids and that's what, we wanna amplify what we're doing here and Jenny's certainly doing a great job of it.
I mean, hats off to you to start a program from scratch.
I've had a lot of good help from like West Plains and other districts that have had this role for a while. They've really kind of taken me under their, their wing. And I've joined great organizations like Mosborough, that's the Missouri School Public Relations Association. And went to a conference recently and so I'm, you know, I'm getting really good, um, guidance and, uh, you know, mentorship from some of these that have been in it for a while. Good job.
Well, just in the back of my mind about, about pictures of kids and confidentiality, is there a?
There's a, there's a disclosure that, that they can sign at the beginning that says, says they don't want their student, um, we have very, very.
Very good.
Thank you very much.
All right, we've got a playground proposal for you. So if you recall, several years ago, we, we put in that surface between the, the old gym and the middle school. It's the middle school playground. That surface is, is definitely in need of some repair. It's a great surface. I put the description, and I'm not even gonna try to pronounce some of the polyurethane, and I recognize that one, but poured in place, it's that, it's that rubberized material and it works really, really well for, for playgrounds. And especially for, for our younger kids. So they're gonna come repair the middle school playground and while they're doing that, I would very much like to propose a construction of a preschool playground right now. You can see the, it's this little, it's this little piece right here, if you build a preschool playground, it's, it's pea gravel. So we have our youngest kids in the district playing on pea gravel. And it gets everywhere and it's, it's rough on the kids, it's rough on the equipment. This would be a tremendous surface for our preschool kids to have and then to, to update the middle school playground as well. So sixty-nine thousand dollars is the bid. Coach Rogers and I have been, have been working on that. Mr. Rogers, he's our coach once in a while. This would be federal ester funding that we could use on this project and then that would take our ester money down to four eighty-seven, nine oh-one from what you saw earlier. But I guess this is something that I think has been needing to be done for several years and those ester funds provide us a nice opportunity.
I was there this morning and picked up my granddaughter and some of that pea gravel is over their shoes, some of their shoes.
Would that still keep us in a good place based on what you were talking about using that other remaining ester funds earlier?
Yeah, that's the CT.
Yeah, I mean, I'd really like to be about the five hundred thousand range and that dips us a little lower, but not, I think we can still make it work.
I also think that includes the repairing the elementary places as well.
Yeah, it does.
So that's repair and the new.
Repair for all the surface that we have of this on the district.
Repair at the elementary and repair at the middle school and new at the.
This is that spongy lot right, how, you know, will we put that down over there?
Yeah. Not as long as I would want it to, honestly, but I think seven or eight years it's been since we put that down. Jim Taylor had the grant for it. So it does require, now clearly that number, the sixty-nine thousand, the majority of that is gonna be the new surface. So we will have to go back and repair the surface probably in another five to ten years. But the durability is not great, but quality is, I, I think offsets the durability. Because you, if you walked on that or played on that, it's, it's good material.
What are the, these other playgrounds that they have, seem like they've had real fine, like almost like shredded turf fields? Is that a?
That, yeah. But again, you're gonna have it getting everywhere. I mean, it's, it's gonna get in kids' shoes and be tracked all over, so.
So, so how much will this is new construction?
Yeah, do you know what the breakdown is for repair?
This is, this is both repair and construction. They didn't break it down for us, Chris, do you know?
I don't, I don't remember at all.
I guess the reason I'm going that direction is in five years, what are we looking at?
Well, we'll probably get a little bit of blank hours and something like that.
To repair.
Yeah, I think that'd be a fair estimate. Of course, in five to ten years, that material could be off the charts.
Well, it's lugged asphalt, you know, it was all.
Sure. That would be my proposal for that. Our kids like that surface a lot.
So the middle schools just wore out these needs.
Middle school and elementary both have just some, there's just some spots, there's some holes and cracks and.
Where's this company at? Are they the, are they the ones that good, you know, good?
So clearly there's no warranty.
No. If there was, it's long gone.
All right, so proposing ester funds.
Yes, yes.
Any other questions concerning the playground surface?
Calendar revision, so if I had been a little more knowledgeable back last winter when I was putting together our, our calendar, I probably would have made this change back when I proposed the first edition of the calendar. But since then, definitely it's come to my attention that there's a big solar eclipse on April eighth. There's billboards all over West Plains. We are in the path of totality for that eclipse. So the question became, what are we going to do with our students during the solar eclipse? We have a lot of kids that are gonna want to see that. Clearly, a lot of parents probably want to be with their kids to, to watch that event. So we have a professional development day on April first right now. My proposal would be to move that professional development day to April eighth. That would be a no-school day for kids. And our teachers would come in and have some professional development that day and we would probably get them out of here in time to, to go watch the eclipse, so. My proposal would be move that professional development day from April first to April eighth. And our, my admin team came up with, they helped me with that decision. I thought it was a really, that's a, that's a smooth, easy fix to what could be just kind of a logistical problem of having school that day. And filing period. I'll need your approval tonight to set the Board of Education filing period from December fifth at eight AM to December twenty-sixth, the day after Christmas at five PM at our central office. We have two three-year terms that are up. That would be Mr. Gump and Mr. Foster. And then one one-year term. Debbie's got that right now, that is Jeff Cunningham's original term, so there's still one year left of that. And that goes to public election for this session. So a total of three positions and folks that come in will have to pick whether they want the three-year or the one-year term. Any questions on that filing period? It's nearly a formality. We, we have to do that, you have, not really an option. Okay, last thing I have for you tonight is our security camera system. Got Andrew here, might have him fill you in on a little bit more on this. So I'm gonna give you the, the layman's explanation and then if you want more details, Andrew can fill in the blanks. Basically, we have created a security camera system from, from Andrew. And it's, and it's vast and it's, it's good. We've done a really nice job with that. Our administration uses our camera system daily, multiple times daily. It is one of the most used systems that we have on campus. It's great that Andrew came up with this and we, we do everything locally. However, it's become this big monster that is a time suck for Andrew and the tech department. In addition to that, clearly there's been upgrades in, in camera systems and so we started looking at other options for our camera systems. We ran out of server space to house our local camera systems. We have, we have so many cameras taking up so much data that we don't have room anymore to add other systems to our, our data bank, if you will. So we were, we were looking at other options. The tech department got a couple of options. Business Systems Connection, which you have the bid for, came in at sixty thousand, two hundred and forty-two dollars. They house their data in the cloud? No, we still house it, but it helps us with data. And Andrew's gonna tell you why that is. But it does. The other bid was for, it was six-figure, how much was that, Andrew?
I don't know, I didn't even look.
It was insane, it was insane. So this allows us to update our camera system. It also provides some, some assistance to us and we would pay for that with our Safe Schools Grant, which was a hundred and fifty thousand. So that would take up sixty thousand of our, our Safe Schools Grant, leaving us ninety thousand to still work on the middle school secure entry. So Andrew, what did I mess up with my explanation?
It was awesome, the technical terms were great. I love databank, that was the coolest one there. So what we did, we had analog cameras back whenever Hutzle was here. He had us start putting IP cameras in and it was never a full system upgrade. It was like, oh, we need a couple of cameras here, we need a couple of cameras here. And we've done that up until now.
How many cameras do we have now?
Right now we have a hundred and fifty-ish cameras. That is way more than anywhere else. No other place has as many cameras as we do. I mean, there is like very little that you can go on campus and not be under camera, so. But what we've done is over the ti, over the years, you know, we've pulled different cameras and it was whatever is cheapest on Amazon. So we pulled all these different vendors in and stuff, we had different servers. Marty will remember whenever we had to be like, okay, if you want this camera, you go to this server and you connect over here and you go through this list and you find what you're looking for. And that was so much fun, but we went ahead. I wrote something to just unify everything. So I wrote a, a user interface that tied it all together and it was cool and it was great and it lasted about a year. But that also, the reason I did that is because we had failing hardware. So the cameras are out there and then you have to have a server connect to them and save them to the hard drives that are on there. Well, we started having things die and it wasn't really in the budget to replace them. We're like, do we really need the cameras? And so we kind of hobbled it along until we got to the point where we're at now, where we have like teacher machines as servers and like all this stuff. It's just the most glorified hillbilly engineered, Josh would be proud that the way I put this together with technology is amazing. And not that I don't love supporting it, but I think it'd be really cool if we had something that actually worked the way it was supposed, supposed to. So with this system, what's really cool is there's no licenses. That's the thing that they get you the most is with licenses. Normally it's like a recurring cost, you pay yearly. They have an end-of-life schedule, which these will have an end-of-life schedule as well, but it's all local. And the other nifty thing with this system is they offload a lot of the processing onto the camera. So what that means is that it takes a server out of the, out of the mix. Before you had camera, server, storage and it had to go through that path down. Now it simplifies it all, we have camera to storage. It's really easy. It does give us remote capabilities, so the cloud that Marty was talking about, it looks like it's in the cloud, really handy on your app and stuff. But it's all housed here locally. And so I think this is very needed. It's like, we do use the cameras for a lot. I mean, there's, I mean, issues that go on between like security, like if we were, you know, practicing for an incident that might occur to just like day-to-day operations or a fight or just looking into a kid if they were like, if like, okay, are we like checking on them? Is there anything suspicious about them, you know? Like, like there's a lot of uses for these cameras. And so I think that it's a really good tool. I don't think we can go back, because like I asked all the admins and admin, what cameras can we get rid of? And there was dead silence, nobody had a single camera, they were willing to give up. Because they're like, every time, every camera you can look at on the system, it's like, well, I dealt with this on this camera and this on this camera. No, yeah, there was this time on this camera, you know? Every reason, every camera we have is there for a reason, something happened. So I think this system would very much help us. It would help us down the road. I mean, obviously, you know, five, six, seven years, we're gonna be coming back and be like, hey, probably need to do something or better plan to keep this going, because they are consumables. I mean, they will die in the weather and equipment like that. But this will definitely help out a lot, because there is a lot of equipment that's still here from Hutzle era. Like, you know, from that very first time, I think the first cameras I put up were on the bus barn area and student parking lot. And then it kind of goes over into the middle school, high school. We still have some of those cameras that you look at and it's like, we don't want to move them, because as soon as you move them, the plastic breaks and they fall to the ground. So that's how old and needing of replaced these systems are, so.
So the sixty thousand was good for how many years?
It's gonna be, like some of the cameras will work really well and they'll, like if they're inside, they'll be better. If they're outside, they'll take a beating and they won't last as long. I would say, you know, six, seven years.
Those expenses along the way to replace those cameras and.
But we're doing a lot of it, right.
This is, this is like, you know, you, you buy the vehicle and then you might have to replace some parts along the way, but the vehicle is the big.
Right, like the server components of it, which is most of the price, I mean, that's, that'll be solid, that'll be lasting. You can add more cameras to it along the way. But the cameras, the expendables parts, you know, I mean, I know it's hard to think of a hundred dollar expendable part, but that is what they are, you know? As they get older and die and they will have to replace, but I, I don't.
Two hundred cameras on here?
Yeah. Well, because, okay, we have a hundred and fifty now. I think it's naive to not think we're gonna hit two hundred by the time we get all this north, or opportunity and innovation. I have no idea. They'd use them differently tonight.
So there's two, back to the two hundred cameras.
That's, I'm. Anyway, I don't think, anyway, that's different.
So that made cameras because of the building?
We're gonna have, like the weight room, the, both buildings, I mean, we're gonna add more cameras. If we're moving to that side of campus and we want to secure it or, you know, monitor it the same way we do this side of campus, we're gonna need to have some cameras over there.
Does that amount replace all the cameras?
Every one of them.
So we're to two hundred? And then it'd just be like, for years to come, it'd be like adding levels?
Replace even levels, I hope we don't add more than two hundred.
We'd have to replace that camera and whatever it was.
Do you guys install those?
So we're looking at a company to install them.
That's the box you get to open up and all the stuff.
I've got a quote.
We haven't made it that far.
Yeah, do you want me, I can look at a quote and see.
Yeah, they're gonna set the lots of stuff.
Josh and Andrew.
Networking and camera installation, right? We don't even use a bucket truck, we just put them drones, put on the poles and the buildings and.
Entryway, we don't know what the middle school entryway will cost.
Well, we have ester money for that as well.
Right.
Yeah, well, they're, they're planning it right now, so in December I can, I can have a number for you, hopefully.
Six thousand dollars.
Six thousand.
And we're waiting on another quote, so, but that's one of them.
Yeah, we don't know what the middle school entryway is gonna cost.
Do we have any ballpark that we don't?
Not yet, we just had our first meeting, met with pretty much Josh and all the other guys, Carl, Ethan, Mike. Tried to include everybody, Andrew, Jeff Cunningham, just to kind of get an idea. I mean, because we are dealing with a nineteen twenty-four model building and we don't necessarily want to just hang something off the side of it that, that's gonna make it look bad, you know, from, from the street. So we were kind of looking at a couple of options, either the front doors or off to the, I guess it would be that north side of the building there. The side door over there. And just seeing what was best, because I don't know what's below the ground and just what all it's gonna take to do that. So just kind of the very beginning, the first meeting, we've kind of had that, kind of come to the conclusion that it probably needs to go to the north side of the building there. But as far as square footage and all that coming up with any kind of an estimate, like we're just not there yet. We're gonna do some rough drawings, take some, some measurements and then try to get Mr. Napp involved.
I think Mr. Owens has already talked to him a little bit.
Yep, and part of the, part of the reason that we can't quite get there yet too is that it may require moving some of the city utilities. So there's a fire hydrant that may need to be relocated. Part of this entryway, the, kind of in conjunction with that is the possibility. is the possibility of adding kind of a pull-off lane, I guess is how you describe that, for parents to pull off of the street when they're getting and loading their child out of a vehicle. Because that, that's, you know, from a safety standpoint, what happens now is a total nightmare at that intersection. I'm sure if anyone's go through there in the morning, you've kind of witnessed some of the craziness with that. So figuring out exactly what we can do with that is, I reached out to Joe Wagner today to kind of answer some questions. I'm on the city utility side. And he was on vacation. He says, as soon as I get back, we will kind of have you some answers what, what we can move. And that's going to kind of dictate how we can tie in kind of a pull-off area off of the intersection of High Street and North Ferguson to work in conjunction with this, this entry system that's in discussion.
I would just say that the sixty thousand for the security camera system, that is a day-to-day piece that we need now. The, the secure entry, we're definitely moving that direction, and we'll have a budget for that. And we'll look at that when we start sitting down and figuring out, okay, what exactly do we need to do here? Well, here's how much money we have that we can throw at that. That is something we need day-to-day. We need now. And we can't, we can't just wait to see how this is going to go, to see what we have left over. This, this trumps that in terms of importance right now. I think we can do, we can certainly do both. And we'll see how much money we have for that middle school entry.
I don't, I don't disagree with that, and I don't have any reservations for the cameras at all. My reservation is, is every building project that we've tackled in the last little bit has gone quite a bit over budget than what we originally thought. And then when we move the needle, and then when we finish the project. So there's a little bit of apprehensiveness there to continue to fork out funds that we're going to say part of it's going to go towards that project.
And in five years, that you're going to pay for.
You know, that's, that's, that's where my apprehension is. I don't doubt that this is necessary and that we need to do it and that it's, you know, critical for the school. It's when you say that, well, we'll have this much left over for this middle school building and this...
Well, that's for me when I'm looking at, how much can we budget for this entryway? And I see that, and I say, okay, we've got ninety thousand left that I can put there. And then now I've got some ESSER that I can put on top of that. And so when you, when we start, keep having these meetings, and we get to a point where this is how much it's going to cost to get that, okay, we have, we can do that. Or we can't do that. We're going to have to back off and do something else.
And so what you're saying right now is that in order of importance, the middle school entryway is less important than the cameras. And you would like us to move forward with the cameras and then...
Correct. Knowing that I have full intention of doing both.
We'll have, we'll have another...
Oh, yeah.
...setup where we lay out the parameters of this building very clearly.
I have a question related to that mess there at the intersection. Do we need to get, do we need to get a no parking? I've come through there with people parked way up there by the stop sign. And people coming, they had to swing out around. It looks like to me that it ought to be no parking back quite a ways from that, from that corner. Do we need to...
We actually, we had Mr. Rutledge come last year from MODOC.
Yeah, Chris.
And he and several of the administrators and Officer Moore went out there and looked at that. And I mean, you start looking at one thing, and then it turns into something else. And it's just like, there's a whole lot going on there. I mean, you've got multiple crosswalks crossing the same street there. We, we talked about several different options of turning that into like a one-way street, turning that possibly, but then you're talking getting city involved. You, I mean, it just, there's not a real good solution there right now.
I, I realize that's not the solution, but I just, I just, from going through there, I just thought that was a simple thing to...
And we do, I've had people park there before long-term, and we, we go and like, no, you can't do that.
This is before and after schools, one next.
Yeah, a lot of times, they, they kind of try to line up there like they would at the elementary, drop off, and just make a...
The problem is, is like, where do you tell them to go? You know?
Well, if you've got a sign there that says no parking from here to the corner, there's no parking from here to the corner, that's why, that's why I'm saying...
Definitely worth investigating, for sure.
I think the rest is fine. It says no parking there at the corner.
Not, there might be on the up, but I'm talking about the crosswalk. The one crosswalk.
It's, it's a mess. I mean, I a hundred percent agree with that. It's a mess. Because you got people trying to pass, and people that can't get by, and then you got kids crossing crosswalks, and it's, it's definitely an issue.
We're, you know, there's some talk too, when we, when we're able to do those trailers out of that corner there, that maybe you could do something with that as well. And that gives you a little bit more room to...
Just to get all around about that, that's what they're doing.
All right. Any other questions?
Yes, I had something I thought about. And of course, everybody knows I flunk upstairs. In fact, Ms. Hayward's doing Facebook and all this stuff. Didn't we both something, help me out here, Matt? Two, three years ago, we voted for a ten thousand dollar deal. We were paying somebody or something. Okay, so...
That's also our school communication. We do calls and cancel several and that kind of stuff.
That's one of the areas she's come in and approved.
All right. Any other questions? Comments from our guests?
Scott, you got any questions?
Scott? Are you still with us?
I walked the whole game, and I'm still with you.
Who's winning?
It's over. We won't talk about it.
Okay, fair enough.
All right. Then we'll move on to items for action. Motion would be in order to approve the bid for a new playground surface and repair as presented. Motion been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Okay, a motion being ordered to approve a new security camera system as presented. Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor? And a motion being ordered to approve a change in the school calendar that would make Monday, April eighth, a professional development day. Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? And a motion would be in order to set the following for school board elections from December fifth at eight o'clock AM to December twenty-sixth at five o'clock PM. Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? All right. Then I would receive a motion to go into executive session. Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. All right.
And, no further discussion?